October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five to order. And the first order of business would be the invocation and the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and thank you for the beautiful crisp fall weather that we've had in the last few weeks. And Father, we just ask for your many blessings and please continue to lift up those in need and those who may be ill or suffering. And Father, we just ask for a productive and wonderful meeting this evening. In all these things, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
And Terry, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge the allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And everyone should have received a copy of last month's minutes. Any comments, questions, corrections?
I move to approve the September eighth, twenty twenty-five minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and second further discussion or corrections. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. And treasurer's report is Sharon's not here?
She's not here.
Okay.
So I do know that the audit is pretty much done early. She's actually taking two weeks off, so she felt very comfortable with it. So there's a couple of little things she has to do while she's out, but she can do that with her computer. But everything went very well with the new auditors and we're done early, so that's a nice change.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah.
And then they will be here, I think, at your December meeting to give the overview, possibly November, but probably December. Nothing necessarily out of the ordinary on the reports. And if you have any specific questions, I don't think. All righty.
Okay, that's it? Okay. Moving on then to Mike Bailey, Plenary Board.
Members, mayor, so I finally have one item on the agenda for the Plenary Commission on October twentieth. And we're going to be bringing for concept approval, the tractor supply that's going to be where the old penny site is. So I've reviewed a couple of things, they're going to need to address a few things, but I think that it'll work out and I think it'll be fun. So I'm looking forward to actually having meetings.
Okay.
That's it.
Any comments, questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to police report. We do have Deputy Richard Willhelmy with us and according to the report, I mean, I see you had a hundred and four vehicle stops in Leonardtown. Always appreciate that. Seventy-six crime prevention, so that's a great response there. So I know there was a little issue over the weekend out in the action. You want to kind of give us a little update there if you could?
I know about as much as everybody else, just reading the SM News/News article, they really haven't posted or I haven't heard anything new about the investigation itself over at Action. What it sounds like is completely separate from Bar Crawl. I was personally working with Bar Crawl with another officer and we had no issues. I had one minor report out of it, but nothing related to what happened over at Action. So.
So it's still being investigated?
It is still being investigated.
Oh, wow. Information, public information at this point, so.
Yeah, everything that we have that we can put out to the public has been put out so far. It's again, our detectives are still doing their job and I guess once they have more information to put out, they'll put it out.
But again, it was just limited to right there.
Correct.
Didn't go anyplace else, so.
No, it was just at Action there.
Okay. Any comments, questions for Deputy?
Is that something that we can talk about later in the, I don't know, what can we do as a town to?
We'll be, yeah, we'll be looking at that and bringing it to you, forwarding it to you later, so.
Okay.
If there's any issues we need to resolve, so.
Right, thank you.
As the information comes available.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had some thoughts coming in.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so we'll move on to Town Administrator's Report, LaShelle.
Okay, we have two items here that Janine is going to actually cover with you, two annexation petitions that we are introducing today to move through the process. She'll give you some background on this.
All right, good afternoon. So the first annexation petition is the introduction and consensus to proceed with resolution two dash twenty-five. This project is the Hall Property Annexation Petition. It is currently zoned rural preservation district under St. Mary's County. They're looking to get a zoning of commercial highway under the town municipal boundary. Right now, it's a residential property and they're looking to put commercial use on there in future. The property is approximately sixteen point three five acres. To the north is residential, which is also rural preservation district. To the south is the town boundary, which is a regular commercial highway. And then to the east and west is also residential rural preservation district under the county. So they filed their petition to incorporate the subject property into the town. They are currently, the parcel is currently developed as a single family dwelling and has an accessory storage shed. They've done some preliminary environmental reviews, which do show a lot of areas that are going to be constrained due to wetlands. But there will be additional studies that will be needed further down the line once they get into any development changes. In 2010, they did a encumbrance with the transferable development rights, but they do have a development right remaining on the property, so that's not an issue. Any future development will have to undergo the full process to confirm that the environmental safeguards and development standards of the town are met. And that's really down the line. We did a preliminary review against the comprehensive plan that's updated this past year and they are within the municipal growth boundary. And the proposed designation of the commercial highway is in compliance with the future land use plan, which shows it as a commercially zoned property. The planning and zoning commission will review the proposed zoning designation at their November eighteenth meeting and they'll provide a recommendation for the council to consider when we move forward with the public hearing process. We do have a very tentative schedule, you know, kind of figured out right now and we're looking at a public hearing date of December eighth. However, we'll see how the, next, next, we'll see how the moving forward goes. The staff is currently working with the applicant to provide the annexation plan and any proposed development plans without the, a little bit further down the line, which will be pressured through the public hearing process. So at this time, staff finds the proposed annexation petition and zoning designation is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. They recommend that the town council review the documentation and provide consensus to proceed with the annexation process. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for staff. And we do have a property owner here tonight in case you have any questions over Mr. Hall.
Just to give you background, David Hall is with us as D and G Customs, signs and auto. That's just leasing that property, so he'd like to be able to, over the years, wanted to be able to buy the property that he could move the business to, so. Anything else you want to add, Dave?
No, I'd be too good.
He does own a property that's already was annexed into the town, that parcel on Route five, and this is right behind it, attached to it. And it does only have one development right left, as Janine said, so that's going to limit what could be done there anyway, so.
Any comments, questions?
So he owns the property that's on the road front already?
Mm-hmm. And attached is to this property.
Okay.
And then, Janine, what did you say, there is a structure on this property or was it a shed? What did you say was there? I thought you said something.
So according to the St. Mary's County records, there was a dwelling that ended in a storage accessory storage shed.
Okay.
I found the front of the storage shed.
So somebody living in the dwellings?
What's that?
Is somebody living in the dwelling, in the house?
No, no. Then that is a house back further in the woods to go on to somebody else.
Is there a structure, there's not a structure on your properties?
No, no.
Okay, so it's just the storage shed.
No, it's just a garage type building. Which is fairly new, I mean, it's metal.
Yeah, that building's only been there a couple of years, three years.
Right.
So it's just today, the motion would be to, if you are okay with moving forward through the process, it'll get sent to the state and the county. And also usually tri-county council, we send it to them as well for review.
Any other comments, questions?
No, I move that the town council introduce resolution number two, two-five to propose the annexation of approximately sixteen point three five acres of land known as the Hall Annexation, generally located at four zero eight nine five Green Hill Lane. Leonardtown, Maryland, two six five oh, and as legally described in the attached documents, and direct the town staff to proceed with all necessary legal steps, including scheduling a public hearing and providing all required public notices and documentation to state and county planning agencies.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, motion and second further discussion. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Move forward.
All right, the next annexation petition we have is for the consensus to proceed and introduction of resolution two dash twenty-five.
This one's two dash twenty-five, this is three dash twenty-five?
Yeah, around three dash twenty-five. Yes, so introduction and consensus to proceed for resolution three dash twenty-five. This is the Johnson, Anthony and Johnston property, currently zoned rural limited, yeah, rural limited, under the county zoning. And they're looking to have PUD residential zoning applied to the property, is currently vacant. There's two parcels that are involved with this annexation, parcel two thirty-five, which is fifty-two point one eight acres, and parcel two sixty-six, which is three point two one acres. So the applicant submitted their zoning annexation petition to bring the property into the town under the PUD zoning and parcel. All right, so I'm sorry, the larger parcel, two thirty-five, which is under the PUD zoning, and the smaller parcel, two sixty-six, would be zoned RSF. That's correct. So they are moving forward with a concept plan for the overall development. Right now, they're looking at maybe some residential dwelling types. Staff will be working with them along with the annexation plan to kind of further develop that concept plan before we bring it forward to the town council. So they are, they did some preliminary studies, no major issues that were outlined. There are some existing storm management, forest conservation streams, wetlands that will need to be addressed on the property during development phase. Under the twenty twenty-five plan, the site is within the town's future growth area. And they do have the proposed zoning designation of PUD on the land use plans without being in compliance with the overall plan for the area. And the planning and zoning commission will review the proposed zoning designation at their November eighteenth meeting to provide a recommendation for council to consider. So again, safe process, looking for a consensus to proceed with the annexation process, should the town council choose to do so. Again, as LaShelle mentioned before, it's all the exact same processes together, so it needs to be state, county, tri-county council, passing the, they're through the process, so.
What did you just say?
But it will go to planning and zoning in November, did I miss hear you? No, yeah, we're going to, yeah, planning and zoning in November eighteenth, reporting zoning recommendations to council.
Understood, okay. Sorry, thank you.
So they're not in the annexation process, but they do look at the zoning that's being recommended. And the larger parcel is in the development district, currently in the development district for the county already. It was one of the parcels that we put in our future growth area that was already in the development district. The smaller parcel needs to come in because it's going to be surrounded by town properties and they are interested anyway in coming in. But it's the one that's a single family and already has a single family home on it.
Okay, thanks, LaShelle.
So is that parcel two sixty-six, is that, I'm trying to look at this map, is that behind the large?
It's across the road.
Oh, it's across?
Across the road, right next to Cedar Lane's property, but directly across the road. So this will kind of wrap around it and we already had annexed in the fire department's property, so it will create an enclave if we don't bring it in. But he is interested, I've met with him personally and he wants to come in, so.
Okay.
I think he came to one of the meetings.
Yes.
All right, well, I knew that the town council proceed with resolution number three dash two-five to propose the annexation of approximately fifty-five point three nine acres of land known as the Johnson, Anthony and Johnston property annexation, generally located at Cedar Lane Road, Leonardtown, Maryland, two zero six five zero. And as legally described in the attached documents, and the direct town clerk to proceed with all necessary legal steps, including scheduling a public hearing and providing all required public notices and documentation to state and county planning agencies.
I'll second. Okay, motion and second further discussion. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
The next item is the liquor license letter of support for transferring the front porch class B liquor license at two two seven seven zero on Washington Street. The owner, Jeff Lewis, the current owner of the front porch, is in the process of selling the business and the building. And Mr., I'm sorry, I don't know how to say your first name.
Dalton Patel.
Okay, Patel and Shalish Patel. They are here to request that transfer and a letter of support. And it does include the current outdoor seating to the name of MPJ twenty-three Incorporated. And the gentlemen are both here, if you have any questions for them, they will be on the November liquor board meeting.
Any thoughts of making changes there or pretty much?
I mean, I thought it's in the beginning to keep it the way it is currently, but eventually we're going to try to, you know, implement some technology, maybe get the place a little bit better, better shape of painting wise, remodeling a little bit. But basically at different stages for the next two years, so.
Yeah, okay, but still maintaining it as, as a restaurant similar to?
Yes, same concept. Same concept.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments, questions?
I can make a motion.
Okay.
I move to approve a liquor license letter of support for the transfer of the class B restaurant license of the front porch from Jeffrey Lewis LLC to MJP two-three Inc. Goton and Shalish Patel. The transfer includes the current licensed outdoor serving area. The front porch is located at two two seven seven zero Washington Street.
I'll second. Okay, motion and second, further discussion. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to you getting in there and cleaning things up.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, the next item is also a liquor license letter of support for a class B liquor license for Rucci's Italian Kitchen and Grill, two two six eight five Washington Street. Do you have to say it's me because I do not, or his first name?
Jamel. Yeah, Jamel is the first name. Jamaldian?
Jamaldian.
Jamaldian and Minor Hernandez.
Yes.
And then we're forward to the.
Lucy Stillwell.
It's Jane.
Thank you. Jamel, that's what I heard. They're requesting a support for a beer, wine and liquor license for a class B restaurant license for the new restaurant, Rucci's Italian Kitchen and Grill. Rucci's will be located at two two six eight five Washington Street in the former Old Town Cafe space. It includes outdoor seating on just the sidewalk in the front, no additional parking or anything. And they will be required to keep the three-foot walkway through there, but we'll be working with them on that.
Wow, that's tight.
I think it was like four, six, four.
As long, yeah, they'll be fine, they just look at one right there, they'll be fine, plenty of room.
Are they going to put up a fence like they did in front of?
No, I don't think so.
That's not what the plan shows, so. The license will be in the names of Jamel, Minor Hernandez and Lucy Stillwell. And they wanted to be here tonight to introduce themselves with the entire staff and everyone was at a convention that was preparing to open. So they said they would come by next month and introduce themselves. And we have met with them and seemed to be very excited and they're going to do some improvements to the building, so I think that's.
Some improvements to the building as we speak.
Yeah, so they'll also be on the November liquor board?
Correct.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
I move to approve a letter of support for the class B restaurant license of Rucci's Italian Kitchen and Grill as requested by Jamel, Jamaldian. The restaurant will be located at two two six eight five Washington Street. The license would include outdoor seating on the sidewalk.
I'll second. Okay, motion and second, further discussion. Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Okay, before I give you an update on projects, I'm going to go ahead and let Jennifer give her, do you have anything to add to your report?
I was just going to add to the Rucci's, we're also welcoming Bay Country Contracting, their pavement hospital, I think. They're in a vacant building right next to Perplex, so we're excited to welcome into Sandra Albert. And also the Weiss Grand Open ribbon cutting celebration is tomorrow at eleven.
Yeah.
Eleven AM.
Ten, ten fifty.
Okay.
There's been a lot of discussion.
Don't mess us up.
Well, I'm seeing you there, let me know if you have any questions on our report, thank you.
Their actual, the actual grand opening is Thursday at seven AM, so.
Seven, wow.
Anything else?
You at the Main Street Conference?
Yes, in Easton, it was so much fun.
Last week?
Yeah, last week, I attended, it's great.
Where did they have that, is that the? Is that the Hyatt, where do they?
They actually had it spread out, Tidewater Inn and the Arts Museum.
Downtown Easton.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I was thinking Cambridge, I'm sorry, yeah, okay, very nice.
Thank you. And I will be attending the arts, the first annual arts and entertainment meeting we've had since COVID on, with Thursday and Silver Spring, so. Excited to see everyone again because we haven't, it's been a long time. Just an update on some projects, the water tower, some of you may have seen, I know Heather was there and it looks great. They had the raising on Saturday a few, a few weeks ago. It's going well, on schedule, the well is, and they should be getting started here in the next couple of weeks. We have a meeting on that this week and it's on schedule. Both of those should be up and running in February, so that's exciting. The wastewater treatment plant, we are making progress. We have, we actually have been delayed for the last couple of months with removing sludge out of the one storm pond, but. We finally are making progress today, I think they have two trucks pumping that out, so hopefully we'll be able to get that done. They should be doing some paving this week if they didn't do it at the end of last week and trying to wrap up the final details. But unfortunately, we have been the holdup the last couple of months without getting that sludge out of there. McIntosh Station is Thursday, they're supposed to do the slip lining of the pipe that we've been held up for the last couple of months on, waiting for that. So that's supposed to happen on Thursday, so they should be able to get all that finalized and get the, get the station back online, which is long overdue. We did go out to bid with three stormwater projects and we had the bid opening very much over budget. We went back and redesigned in Academy Hills that project a little bit to try to save some money and think it's a better design and we should be able to save us some money. So it's back out to rebid it and we are expecting those bids in on October thirtieth and hopefully we'll be able to bring it forward on the November meeting to move those projects forward. We do have additional annexations that we've talked about. We had a meeting with several property owners north of David's property on Route five, that there are several projects that want to come forward. They're kind of going to do it as a group and I think that will work well and I anticipate that in the next couple of months. So we are working with the property owners, trying to organize that. Any questions? Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to my report, I see Christie Parker joined us from LBA, wasn't at the LBA meeting on Friday because had to take the granddaughters and daughters and wife up to the train station, so. So why don't you give us a little report?
Yeah, lots to report on, so the Paw Crawl was an overwhelming success in town and they're planning to do that the last Sunday in September. They want to do it next year, they want to make it a annual event. I actually was in the slice house and Ken was saying like, it was just shocking how many dogs came into town for that. So if you're a dog lover, that was, that was just a great event, so very successful.
Just to reiterate, that was the dog crawl, not the bar crawl.
The paw.
The paw crawl.
Paw.
Yes.
So October first, Friday was another awesome event with the flash mob, the heiress did a great job, just really, really good. And the start of the scarecrow stroll, thank you guys for participating. We've noticed some outfit little things happened over the weekend, but they're getting taken care of and hopefully what happened over at the scare of doesn't happen then, so. I don't know if y'all heard about that, so. We're working on details for the passports to the holiday shopping stroll event, which will be November seventh to the ninth. And then Gingerbread Lane is already proving to be a good, has a good response. They've sold eighty of the cutouts already and they're ordering more. So it should be scarecrow stroll part two just for December, so that should be good. And there is a paint party over at Brew on November the second, since this past weekend's got rained out. We're also working on selecting the vendors for the wedding expo, which is February the eighth, twelve, three. The main vendor locations will be inside the inn at Leonardtown, the vault and the funneled inn. Any questions for me?
Okay, thank you very much. And let's see, let's see, we already talked about the waste market opening. The other thing I wanted to mention was the Crab Basket Christmas tree. Anybody interested in helping with building the Crab Basket tree down at the Wharf? You can contact Amanda Cullison or Bubba Cullison. But I was contacted a couple of years ago by Robert T. Brown and about doing this and it just kind of hadn't moved forward. But they're moving forward with it now, so this is what it would actually look like down at the Wharf.
I'll do that.
Anybody who wants to buy a basket, it's fifty dollars a basket and for you to decorate it, it'll be part of the Crab Basket tree, so.
A basket or a buoy?
Basket or a buoy, yes.
Awesome.
Okay.
How do you get that info down?
Well.
We can send out, we can send that to everybody tomorrow.
Yeah, we can send it out, it's got the numbers to contact here, so, okay. That's all I had, so we'll move on to council reports. Heather?
I sold forty dollars for my gingerbread man. This weekend is the Monster Mash, so Monster Mash Bash, excuse me. Next weekend, it's Angels' Aces, I think, is back, the breast cancer awareness walk that we've all participated in and have supported. That's on October twenty-fifth. The Veterans Day Parade is just around the corner as well on November eleventh, I feel like we just did that. And also just a reminder for scarecrows, if people just could not, just, or I could reverse psychology this, touch all the scarecrows, but. No, please remember that people worked really hard on them. This weekend, I was out to dinner and the one outside Perplex was fine when I passed it. And then when I went back, not even an hour later, it was knocked over and kind of beat up. So and apparently that's like the third or fourth time that's happened to that one, apparently because it's wearing a certain jersey and maybe people don't like that football team. But anyway, I've been, I've enjoyed all the scarecrows.
Redskins jersey.
Must have been a Cowboys fan.
That'd be what it was doing.
Yeah. Oh, my gosh, Cowboys ought to work, stay out of that one.
I can't believe how many families and people walking around looking at them, I mean, all times of the day, it's been. all times of the day, it's been incredible.
Yeah, some people taking pictures with them, I just saw somebody taking a picture of the Hurley Sharp that were on the corner on the way here, so just, you know, just be mindful and respectful, and so other people are able to enjoy them. That is all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Nick, community development and planning?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Nice uptake in permits and UNOs last month, so that's good to see, still plenty of work coming through, and Meadows and Town Run Phase 2, they're still making nice progress. Every time I drive by, there's a lot of traffic going up and down that road, but it's good to see, so always happy to see that. And then, just as Heather mentioned, the scarecrow contest, if you haven't been downtown, come on down, take some pictures, vote for your favorite, but just remember, you know, don't touch them, just leave them alone. That's everything for me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Christie in with us today, anything for?
Just in my report, Comcast is going to be doing some work downtown, they're finishing in the neighborhoods, the original, you know, initial work, and they'll be starting downtown, which are mostly overhead lines, but you will see some activity in the next few weeks on that. Cottages of Leonard Town, all the utility work in the street was done last week, and they're pouring the sidewalk today, I think, to fix that, I think they look great. And then Meadows and Town Run, we did have a few closings, so people are living there now, and I think that's about it.
Michelle, Sarah, which ones are the cottages over here, the tiny houses?
They're not tiny, but.
They're not, I know.
They're the cottages, yeah.
Yeah, nearby, they look, they look nice.
There's a lot of positive lately, I really have.
I know, people were like emailing me when they were putting up the structures, like, how do I get it?
And they're such a, I mean, the price is not cheap, but I mean, there's a lot of people that they're already showing them, and for rental, and I just think they're going to be an example, it'll be an example project around the state with the initiatives that they have for trying to get housing for people, so, I think, you know, all in all, people will be pleased whenever they see them finished.
And the two townhomes right next to them have been updated, really cleaned up.
Yeah, the one's old, and, yeah.
It's a much needed improvement on that corner, looks a lot better.
There's a lot of greens, but, I mean, really, a lot of grass.
There really is, yeah.
I was kind of surprised.
I mean, everyone's going to have a porch, and they'll have a garage, I mean, so it's something they couldn't have when there were 12 apartments there, there's going to be eight actual single family houses.
Yeah, four more homes, it'll be going.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think it's a positive.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. And Jay, Southern Maryland Municipal Association?
All right, Mayor, thank you. So unfortunately, I couldn't make the fall conference that wrapped up today in Wisp, that was in Western Maryland, and they had a good turnout, 338 attendees, and out of those 338, they had represented 84 municipalities, and within the 338, they, believe it or not, they had 121 first time attendees, so for the fall conference, that's really good.
So we didn't have any of us go this year?
No.
Yeah, I didn't.
The Southern Maryland Municipal Association did have a meeting there, I did reach out for details, I've not received anything back, so I hope to hear outcome on what was discussed or where we're going, and my goal is to be at Weiss tomorrow at 10:50, and I'm going to try my best, at least it's on my schedule right now, we'll see how my day unfolds. Yeah, and Mayor, it's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor, business development and retention?
Thank you, Mayor, I will not be there tomorrow, unfortunately, tomorrow is October 15th, which is the last day of tax filing, and I have had a lot of people, I'll be back at work tonight, so I'm looking forward to seeing my kids again on Thursday. But I just want to remind everybody that the holiday season is coming up, so anybody that's, you know, shop locals, shop small businesses, and don't forget about the individual vendors, you know, we've got the town market over here, I think they usually have 20, 25 vendors that'll come in on the weekend, and there's a vendor show, Leonard Town Fire Department, these are all small businesses too, so this is all something that we can, we can support. And then I wanted to mention to everybody that two weeks ago, I went out to Stanton, Virginia, for the Harry Potter weekend, which was fabulous, it was fabulous, for even people that are not big Harry Potter fans, but what was very cool was it's a grassroots effort that's actually done by the town, and the town is the one that pulls it, all the, all the businesses and everybody are the ones that pull it together, they've been doing it for 10 years, 40,000 people come in for this weekend, they have 90 volunteers that go around, and they all dress up in individual costumes, and for, you know, somebody like me, I was like, oh my God, because I knew who they were, the people with me weren't nearly so excited, but what was super cool.
And you, Mayor, yeah.
It was so fun, but what was super cool was they have, and I brought my pin, you could buy a pin from the town, and it was just a regular pin, and then each person that was dressed up had a charm to go on the pin, and the charm kind of went with, you know, their character, and so it was really fun to be very interactive and to be able to go up, you know, it was so easy to walk up to somebody and be like, oh, you know, can I get a charm? And they'd be like, oh, here's a dog charm, you know, because he had a dog, or here's a wand charm, or whatever it was, so we ended up with about 50 of these little charms that we got. Interestingly enough, they don't allow any outside vendors, so it's all solely the town that does it, and what I thought was really cool was that, you know, even somebody like a barber shop, maybe, that wouldn't do so well, I mean, what are they going to do to entertain, you know, for the, for the weekend, they were the ones that were selling lemonade, you know, they came up with something else to do to participate, and so, and it's already on the calendar for next year, they're bringing in The Wizard of Oz next year, because they said magic is everywhere, doesn't matter, it doesn't have to be Harry Potter, but I will tell you, I mean, for a fantastic, family-friendly event, there were kids, you know, little kids, there were adults, there were everybody, people dressed up, it was so, such a great weekend, but, you know, something, like I said, as easy as these charms, it just made everybody want to, you know, participate and play, we had the best time, so, just something to think about, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything for the good, the good of the cause? Okay, if not, then obtain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Michelle, can we have a Harry Potter weekend? I was wondering, what can we do?